Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this work session, the Luray Town Council called to order. Would you stand and join me in a moment of silence, please? Vice Mayor Shire, will you lead us in our pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, will you call the roll, please? Here?
Here.
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 Mr. Sowers.
He's here remotely.
I'm here.
Joey?
Hey, Joe.
Did he answer?
You're vaguely.
We gonna work on that or keep going? That's all we can do, okay, alright. Before we get into the, tonight's discussion, we have a request from the Reverend Sarah Galindo of the Luray Christian Church. She would ask that we issue a Thanksgiving proclamation, and she's asked for, she asked the mayor to come deliver it on November 20th. I will be out of town, I think, Ron, are you, you okay to do that for me?
I'm okay.
Okay, good, alright. So I guess we just need to decide whether we want to issue a Thanksgiving proclamation. We've not done that before, but that doesn't mean we can't do it.
I have no problem.
Sure.
We need to vote on that, the disacclamation, okay. Steve, you'll write one, and Ron, you'll write one, yeah. Okay, alright. Alright, well, let's go ahead and get into what we're really basically here for, and that is the discussion on the ARPA funds, and Steve, you want to lead off?
Well, yes, sir. Basically, your council has asked for an opportunity to start the discussion of, at a high level, how the town should consider using the ARPA funding. To date, we have not received any updated guidelines from the Department of Treasury. They have issued a frequently asked question document back in July. So staff have provided to y'all basically a list of every item that appears to be identified in the ARPA legislation. A number of them do not, are not within the town's purview, specifically, a lot of public health issues, the education issues, things of that nature. But there are a number of items that the town could consider, including in their use of the ARPA funding. So council had asked for a work session so that y'all could start talking about where you feel it would be appropriate for the town to consider putting in funds. I wouldn't, I would suggest start just going through what items you feel are appropriate, or you would consider a good use of the town funds, rather than getting into how much should go into any area yet. And then, once we have an idea, or you guys have an idea of where you would like the funds to go, then you could, either tonight or at a future date, start getting into how to identify where the funding should, the amount of funding that should go to any and all of those areas.
So do we want to go through these, or just kind of look at the ones that the staff has already identified? I think you all picked pretty much the correct ones, or how do y'all want to do this? Since we've never done this, I'm really not sure how to do it, but.
Start off just with a more broad perspective. I think, I think it's important to note that the survey that we did from the residents, I mean, this is the input that we got. Looks like public safety, public safety and infrastructure were two of the major categories that they'd like to see the funds spent in. To what degree we can spend the funds under some of those things, but I kind of lumped that in, public safety with first responder services. But, these are, these categories, a lot of them, as you said, I mean, we can, we can walk through them, but a lot of them are not functions that the town carries out. I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these services are carried out at the state or county level. So, I mean, I think the broader, starting with a broader perspective of what we want to do, and then kind of narrowing it down after that is a, is a better way of doing it.
How much do we, do you remember, what did we get in the first round? Was it somewhere like $900,000?
The cares money?
Yeah, it was eight hundred and something thousand.
How was that kind of broken down? Do you remember?
Well, a lot of it, a good bit of it went towards improvements within the building, as well as we purchased three digital signs to replace our static signs. They are still on back order, but that was part of it. We purchased some new vehicles for the police department. We purchased a new vehicle for the fire department. We did, believe, two rounds of.
Hazardous duty pay.
Hazardous duty pay.
Thank you, the key word, for staff. We bought a lot of.
PPE.
PPE. We hired staff at the park level to do additional cleaning of our restrooms and facilities. And then, we, we did a, laid into the, the opportunity, we did a, we gave money towards businesses and nonprofits to help them with their adjustments towards COVID.
Didn't we also buy two more of those big signs, the mobile ones?
Yes, sir.
Or was that before?
We did, we bought some of those.
Two of those. We already had two, right, but we bought two more?
Yes, sir.
It's pretty non-controversial, is the way I remember it. Everything we spent was well-received.
And fortunately, it was identified within the legislation.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a lot more specific than this first round is.
That's, that's been the hesitancy of staff with the ARPA money, is it's not as clear-cut.
I think I'd like to say that, I'd love to spend a hunk of money on infrastructure, stuff that's not very romantic or cool, but we need it and it affects every taxpayer. If we fixed every leak in the water system and replaced every meter, I don't see anything wrong with that. Because, like Jerry, there's a lot of things on this list I'm not sure we should get involved in.
Well, Mr. Shire made a comment last council meeting that I think was spot-on, that we keep looking at this at many different angles, and, you know, I think we need to identify, what is the priority? I agree, I think the survey results need to play a big part. You're talking about over 500 responses from taxpayers or citizens, and when, some of them may have been out of the county, I mean, or out of the town. But, what I'm going with this is, we never had that type of volume show up at a meeting or anything else. I mean, our biggest input, our largest response, input from the community, was the survey. We see what those results are. I think we need to give pretty good weight to that. But what you had mentioned is, we find this priority, and if the priority is something tied with infrastructure, we need to identify what that is, and what the cost of that is going to be. And if we say, yes, infrastructure, what is it? Is it going to be water and sewer complete replacement along Mechanic Street? Is it going to be water and sewer replacement half of Reservoir, or part of Fairview, or whatever the case may be? We won't know what that dollar amount is until something like that goes to bid. And what we think may cost 2 million, may cost 3 million, or more so, as we, as we bounce around with this and try to look at so many different things, I think, what's the big primary goal with these funds? And, once we identify what that primary goal is, we need to get an estimate or an idea of what are the costs of that primary goal. And then, the rest of it can be determined after that, or as we go, as far as what's there. I mean, if we keep chipping away with 10 or 12 other ideas of where it might go, and then we finally get to the point of deciding what the big project is, we may be short of funding for whatever the big project is, as we chip away others. So, that's just my thought, that, let's, let's identify and pick this priority, and get an idea of what it costs.
I agree. I think, I don't know that there's one specific project that, to me, whatever we can do that creates some sustainability in that it will, it will continue to provide the services and, and will reduce our customers' exposure to additional costs and additional debt services in the future. I think, maybe not so much the little, when I say little, I don't, I mean, 100,000 or whatever the case might be, projects that are kind of ongoing maintenance kind of things, but something that we can do that would really have an impact on future costs to our customers, is, is the way that I see that as, as the biggest priority.
I agree, and we've got an opportunity to do things here that, that are still serving Luray citizens 25, 50, 75 years from now. When we speak on the infrastructure side, and, you know, we've got.
And I think, I mean, I think there's still room, I mean, not everything needs to go to infrastructure.
No, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, but, to identify the pot of money that would, if we all agree that infrastructure is our priority, then, how much money are we talking about there? Then that gives us an idea of what we have to spend in some other categories.
And what's left, and how can we divide what's left, and, right, that's.
Well, why don't we look at the page that has the highlighted items? That's the town, American Rescue Plan Act 2021. There's a lot of things listed there, over the, you know, over the future years, that's up to 5 million. Well, as I look through that list, there's a lot of things I agree with.
And when staff developed this, Steve, is this kind of what, under, I'm just talking infrastructure now, is this kind of how you guys feel is priorities?
Well, this was our first go-round. There, if, if council were to say 5 million total to infrastructure, we have identified projects that could, could use it all. But when we were developing this program, we recognized that the revenue recovery, the second item there, that is an opportunity for the town to effectively use the ARPA monies to offset your general fund, which would then allow greater flexibility in how those funds would be allocated. And we've already determined that 100 and some odd thousand was going towards our new police cars. We, and then, some, there's been a few other items that we've already gone ahead and purchased in this fiscal year, recognizing that the funding would most likely come from the revenue recovery in, in ARPA from this fiscal year. So, again, what, when we put this, this plan together, the intent was to, at least in the first year and, and through the revenue recovery, give council the opportunity to explore any and all opportunities to use those monies that we could. Whether or not you want to go forward with, with four years of that, that's, that's up to council. But, again, the, the plan that we came up with gives y'all a lot of flexibility as far as where some of these other, some of these monies could go that aren't necessarily within the ARPA guidelines. Now, then, when you get into the utility, infrastructure, the 700,000 towards the meter reading may well be a million dollars, depending on what level we take it to. The water treatment plant upgrades, when we went out there, Joey was talking about how we needed to replace the pumps to go to the, to the horizontal pumps. So, we definitely have those needs. The wastewater treatment plant, we've got some additional pumps that need to, when y'all visited with, with that plant.
Remember Joey talked about a cover for the?
Yes, sir.
That's not on this, is it?
No, sir.
That was a million dollars, wasn't it?
That, that could potentially be expensive, yes, sir. So, again, that was one of the items that we needed, but, again, I think as, as council was talking about, when you get to a point of where your comfort level is, again, we could use all 5 million towards town utility projects. It's just a matter of identifying where we're, where we're at with them. The vacuum truck, is it absolutely necessary? No, but does it make responding to sewer backups and other things easier? Yes. Luray Landing, that is definitely, we need to work towards upgrading the lift station out there, and eventually, putting in that water facility there. The sewer main lining, INI is always going to be a problem with the town, so as much as we could dedicate towards that, there's definitely a need. Water line replacement also, we've got water lines that are probably 40, 50 years old, and would our residents benefit greatly from replacement, replaced lines? Yes, we can extend the life and limit the amount of water breaks in the future dramatically. So, where we want to spend the money, if, if, if infrastructure is council's desire, we can come back with a, a list of all of the projects that, that staff have developed. And, and then y'all could go through that and say, okay, yes, this is what we feel is a priority, and that would give y'all a better idea of just how much would need to go towards infrastructure projects.
I think seeing that list with, with them being, you know, having the priority levels would be valuable. And with, to go a step other, what Mr. Vickers just mentioned with the expense that Joey brought up, how many years out, I mean, how long, you know, what does that look like before we're, okay, it has to be done?
I noticed, I mean, I was thinking, I mean, I think I'd mentioned it about, I know we can't use any of this money for existing debt service, but I was, I was thinking about the idea of leveraging some of the money with some other programs. But as I read these guidelines, we, we can't do that either, can we?
Not yet, it may come out, I know, there's, there were a lot of questions and comments that went into the, to the treasury. Hopefully, they'll come out with a greater flexibility, but.
Because if we're gonna, I mean, when it comes to infrastructure, that would be a good way to leverage the money. In other words, use some of these programs that require 25% from the municipality for, for a lot of money, and at really low interest rates, this would be, if we can do that. But right now, the way I'm reading this, the way it's currently drafted, it doesn't, doesn't look like we can do that.
But we could use revenue recovery funds, couldn't we?
Potentially, yes, sir.
I mean, what's?
The question would be, it's intended to go to general fund, and then you get into the, should we be using general fund money?
For the utilities, yeah. Yeah, and that was pretty clear in here, that they didn't, they don't like that.
Yeah, I think the intent is that if you're going to go for a utility project, use the specific ARPA funds.
Steve, I'll just say, I think Stephanie's idea of coming up, you know, I want to spend, I think it's, infrastructure's a good idea, and you know, we probably don't want to spend it all on infrastructure, but again, in the long term, like Jason said, and Jerry said, everyone's basically said it would benefit the taxpayers long-term. Maybe they won't realize this at the time, but long-term, I think it's a, it's a good idea. But, I think if you could come up with a list of, you know, sit down with Joey and Brian, and what's the gentleman at the wastewater plant, Superintendent Wastewater Plant? Todd?
Ellison.
Okay. And I'm sure it's what you're doing, and just come up with a, a list of maybe 10 things and a rough idea. And then that might, I've done a lot of sidewalk improvements too, in the last few years, that I, I think are great. I know probably used in some of the VDOT funds for those potentially maintenance funds, maybe not for the replacements you have, but, I mean, if there are other things like that. And on, on the, for the rec park, on the replacement of the imagination station, were we planning on using?
We were hoping, well, when this list was originally made, we had been given guidance from the Senator, from our Senator that said, oh, absolutely, part of the, the guidance will be that getting people outside, getting them into a healthy environment will definitely be part of the included options. It didn't appear that then, so that's part of the reason that those are highlighted, was that we had initially been told that they would qualify, but we, that would, they're, right now, the only one that we've actually heard definitively that it could is the website, but that's when we include online permitting, online payment, to allow people to do greater remote business with the town. The website would qualify. The other three events, the funding for our police department and imagination station, as the guidance currently exists. And then, that would, again, be some of the options for council with the revenue recovery. And if they don't technically fall under ARPA, it would give you the flexibility to use some of that.
Yeah, and, you know, that's just, and, of course, I had thrown the idea about another pocket park slash farmer's market on Main Street, and, just as another potential idea, maybe something on the fun side of things. And of course, nonprofit and business assistance, and that's probably not going to be as big of a chunk of money, but I think we probably want to do something there, as far as public safety. Oh, your hears, or any, any other big ticket items or things that might be of useful, or? I'm sure you could always think of something else.
Not that you ask.
I mean, is there, you know?
I get a list, Steve, I think, interestingly, mine is a little large, so.
And if you look at the, I'm sorry. As it stands right now, the chief's list would have to then be under the revenue recovery, but we'll include that list to y'all as well.
And not to take anything from the chief, but if you actually read those surveys, fire was a big part of that too. I mean, when you read, when you read those survey by survey, that public safety being launched up there at number one, definitely tied with the police department too, but, but the fire, fire rescue side was just as much involved in that too.
And, and we did include that, and that, fire and rescue made the cut. Unfortunately, the chief, just, as it stands right now, the guidance doesn't allow us to do law enforcement.
There's a, there's a thing about the uptick of gun violence during COVID.
We'll see.
No, I'm just saying, it's written down there.
It is.
Police side, that's the only thing.
Yeah.
It's proof of the increase in gun violence since COVID.
Steve, the, the, back to the imagination station, is it, what is it that you think? I mean, when I read that some of this in here about outdoor activity and that kind of thing?
Talking with, with Jason, he's not there yet. He doesn't feel confident that it makes the cut. He's hoping, and, and I am too, that when the final clarification comes in, that it will be just as clear as, as day, that park facilities that present an open atmosphere for children and families.
Because, I mean, it's, it's pretty much exactly the language in here.
Jason's not there yet.
Really? That's hard to believe, I mean, I thought that'd be a no-brainer.
Well, you could obviously walk around town, hand out money to businesses, I would think, you know. I would think that, you know, I mean, some places are doing that, that's fine, but I would think that that would, would qualify, but, I mean, you know.
I wouldn't recommend that just yet.
Yeah.
Well, imagination station, didn't we budget for that like two years ago before all, before the cares fund? I mean, we'd budgeted to pay some down, and to pay, what, five or six years?
But it's debt service that we would eliminate.
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, but still, we're going to do it either way, right?
It's included in this budget, we can go forward without ARPA.
Yeah, no, it's in there, but it's borrowed money.
Yeah, that's funding that goes to the better of the town.
That's, use our money if we can.
Can you all hear me? Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
What we look at? When Joey, Joey was talking.
I don't know if everyone can hear me, and I hope so. It would be great, especially for that, since that's such a big bucket that we're looking at, to have some sense of the value add or the cost savings. If it's something like laying ice in the ground, replacing stuff that's 50 years old, that's a pretty clear-cut future cost savings or value add. As we're looking at things like some of the other items that we mentioned, even meter readings, I can see some of the value, but if it's a million dollars, you know, I think, I think we really need to give a sense. Not just about how much it's going to cost, but what type of value we're going to get back for that investment. So as, as you all are doing that, in turn with Joey, and Todd, and Brian, I'd love to get, for you to come up with at least a, a very basic or 5,000-foot view of that value that it's going to add, if you can't do it, more quantitative.
We can attempt, we can try to provide that, yes, sir.
Sure, so like for the meter readings, for instance, is it going to be able to save X number of man-hours a week, or something like that?
Well, I know that the citizens won't, won't appreciate it, but what it will do, it will give a more accurate reading of the consumption at each residence for the 10 or 12 years that they're accurate. So, it, the, the main benefit to the town will be a greater realization of utility fund collection. But we, we can definitely provide that to you.
Sure, okay.
Jason, what was you going to say?
Oh, I was just going to mention, you know, a lot of this, when we talk about the infrastructure side, a lot of it we're talking about improvements, upgrades, repairs, that type of thing. But, when I look at, and you had mentioned it, when we talk about like the water tank and the lift station, Luray Landing, I mean, that's something that doesn't exist with the recent amendment that's been made there. I mean, that's something that the town is now taking responsibility, that should be a, a def, MIP, and definitely one that, that's an easy one to decide, hey, that's got to be done, and these funds allow for it.
Well, the focus, part of the focus should be projects that gear towards economic development, and, and, and serving areas that potentially are open for growth. And again, that, we're reducing our existing customers' cost if we're expanding our customer base with, with water and sewer services. So, I mean, I think that's a, that's something that should be a part of the consideration when we're looking at these projects.
So something I brought up to a couple of you all, is I'd love for us to develop something along the lines of a rubric for assessing which projects we should really tackle, like a series of questions, for instance, does it benefit the majority of the citizens of Luray? Does it return high value for the citizens? Does it, is it a sustainable value, you know, a number of, a series of? You know, a number of, a series of questions along those lines, uh, that we weigh and then we can assign a score. I think maybe that's too much, but something along those lines where we know less, where we focus less on the projects that we want to do, because that's going to be difficult to, to prioritize those to some extent. But we have values that we want to attain through this funding. And we look at a project and, and assess it to the best degree that we can on that basis. And I wanted to, I was gonna share a printout with you all tonight of just the basic idea of what that would look like. Um, but of course, you know, I didn't want to get, I didn't want you all to catch what I have, so, but that's the whole tonight.
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, the school system shared it with my kids and my kids were just as kind, so, well.
Is there any indication, Steve, um, that you've heard, I mean, cause I haven't, I haven't read anything, that there, when there's gonna be a clearer set of guidelines? I'm, I'm not seeing anything that puts any kind of timetable on it.
The only indication that we've had, originally, the legislation had required towns to provide an October response to the treasury of how we had used the funds. They have now pushed that back to April of twenty twenty-two.
Oh, gosh.
So, I would read into that, that they gave themselves an extra six months.
Weren't we supposed to get final guidelines by August at one point?
Originally it was July and then it was August.
And how much actual money have we received at this point?
Two and a half, I believe, two and a half million.
And when, what would be the, the anticipated, when would we receive another disbursement?
Sometime next year, I believe, July, and, and, and that's the, the final lump sum, from what I understand.
Problem is, is with, with these things, is time is money and, I mean, when you, I mean, it's one thing to settle on the money, it's another thing when you've got projects that you want to do and it's going to cost more, uh, next year than it is.
Yeah, my hope would be for these, any of these major projects, that we would kind of line it up this fall, winter and can start construction and, you know, in the spring on several of these things.
So, how are we gonna decide on those major projects, Steve? You're gonna meet with the?
Well, we'll, uh, staff will prepare a, a list, both from the police department and some water and sewer, and, uh, we'll, we'll get that to y'all in advance of, of a next meeting, so that, um, I do know that, uh, the, the question would be whether or not you would want to move your November work session a week ahead or?
Thanksgiving. It's gonna hit Thanksgiving, you know?
We're running into veteran, what is that, Memorial Day, Veterans Day?
Veterans Day is on, uh, you guys will have Friday on Veterans Day, right?
I think we take it Thursday.
Oh, you take the actual day?
Yes, sir.
Eleven, eleven, okay.
So, a- a- again, we can, uh, right now, the, the agenda for your November regular meeting is fairly light, so we can include a continuation of this discussion there, or we can do a special meeting sometime in November. Again, just to give you all, uh, the opportunity to have a continued discussion, however council decides.
November's work session is, would be twenty, twenty-third or?
Yeah, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving, yes, sir. I, I didn't know if anyone was going out of town and, we, we can have it that, that Tuesday, but.
That works for me.
Okay, with everybody?
So far, yeah. Can we still, we, can we still do Zoom in if we're not in town or we?
Yes.
We can do that?
Uh, well, uh, other than not really hearing you very well. Joey, you can hear us pretty well?
Yeah, I can really find. I can hear some of the folks, uh, from the council members, unless so, but yes.
So, yes, sir, that, that is still available.
And, uh, would, would you also mind sitting down with, I guess, Jennifer and Morgan on Rexon Park and seeing if they have a little, some, you know, kind of part of the infrastructure too, if there's some things that they might?
Absolutely. Jennifer, uh, as part of this year's budget, put together a plan. We have a number of roofs that need to be replaced on our shelters, uh, so, yes, sir.
Okay.
They, they have a list and we can definitely include that as well.
Don't forget to park your park.
If anything else we want to discuss, I, I mean, we, I don't feel like we've gotten a whole lot done, but I don't feel like we really can until we get these final guidelines. It's just, I mean, I don't really know.
Yeah, so, so what are you gonna, the department heads, what are you, are you gonna ask them for like the top five?
Well, what, what we'll do is we'll sit down and just, right now, each department actually has a list. And so what we'll do is ask them to come up with some of the information requested as far as, um, yeah, what, what's being replaced, the, the lifespan of what they're proposing to use. Um, and then we'll, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll work with them to come up with a, a value of how critical it is to their, their, their department. And then we'll present that to y'all. Uh, again, with, with water and sewer, I know that we can, I think we've got a total of seven million that if, at last count, that if, if, if the money materialized, uh, we could, we could use it. So, and I think we'll give you that full list because as, as Vice Mayor Shiro indicated, what we may want to do is just use some of the funds to go towards a, a loan or, or, or grant application. So, we might be able to make better use of, of the ARPA funds to, to get more of the infrastructure without using the, the large chunk of, of ARPA money.
I mean, I just, you know, what you're doing is fine. I mean, I trust the department heads to know what's most needed, you know, in their departments, uh, even better than us, of course. And, uh, but it would be hard if, if each department gives a list of thirty things, then we're right back to where we're sitting here tonight. You know, that's what I was saying about maybe if they give us that.
And, and we can, we can, we can compartmentalize it to the top five. And if, 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 if council desires, and if we do proceed with the, the work session in November, we can ask the, the department heads to, to attend if they're still in town, so that if there's any specific questions about any of those items, they'll, they'll be able to, to give you that much more information.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's a need, regardless of the priority, I, I'm not opposed to having them listed. Again, I think it's just a matter of them ranking it so that we know what is the priority. But just for sake of forecasting, even beyond this, uh, e- even beyond this conversation here.
Yeah, keep it.
I think it would be valuable to know.
Exactly, I agree.
What's coming down the pipeline, yeah.
And what, and I think what Joey said, I think is a good point. I mean, some kind of idea of return on investment for that, for those things in terms of how they're going to impact the, the future, the utility structure, the future so far as expanding the services and that sort of thing.
Anybody else, any more comments on this? Uh, again, I, I, you know, I guess, you know, I kind of read the newspapers, watch what other coun, watch what other councils are doing. I mean, everybody's in the same situation we're in, I think nobody really knows what to do. Talking with people at VML, just a lot of confusion, a lot of uncertainty, and nobody's, really seems to be doing much yet, so. If you know anybody in other towns, talk with them, see what they're doing, and it certainly doesn't hurt them.
I have.
Get some ideas, yeah, well, I have to, they, they, again.
It's just, it's, it's very ambiguous.
Yeah, it is. Anybody else on this subject? All right, well, so we are gonna meet on the twenty-third and, what are we gonna talk about at the next regular meeting or push it back to the work session?
Well, as soon as we get the departments, uh, their, their, their plans, we'll get them to y'all. We can include it as just an item for discussion at your regular meeting and then we, uh, you all can make the determination if, if, if you'd like to have continued discussion at, at a work session.
Sounds good.
Good with everybody?
Yep.
A couple of dates, uh, you may want to jot these down. Um, are we still on for October twenty-seventh back here, Steve, for tearing down the?
Yes, sir.
If anybody wants to come watch that.
Contractor's supposed to be here tomorrow, uh, his house back there.
Tomorrow, okay, that is tomorrow, yeah.
Uh, the, the, the chief is supposed to, to be here at four-thirty to run through and make sure no one's occupying the, the buildings.
In the morning?
Contractor.
I was gonna say, I'd show, I'd get up just to see that.
Chief will be here at four forty. Okay. Um, of course, Halloween, the, the Halloween festivities are Saturday from four to six.
Where is it exactly?
Uh, we are gonna be judging down to Plaza, is that right, Steve?
At the Plaza.
Yeah, at the Plaza, yeah. And again, Stephanie, it shouldn't take but a half an hour if you can be there, I think.
I will be, yes.
I'm pretty sure we can, yeah, yeah, get out of there by then. Um, the, the, Jen has scheduled what she's calling the final play date at Imagination Station, November thirteenth at noon. How soon after that is the demolition gonna start, Steve? Do we know that or is?
Uh, we are, we, Jennifer put an ad out, uh, we actually had one, uh, actually I think we've had one and I think we had a second one come in today of individuals that are interested in doing the demolition at no cost to recover the materials. So, I know we've had at least one person that has come forward and I think there's a second. So, uh, the, the under, my understanding is that, um, it should start within a week. Demolition should start within a week or two after this, this date, based on the conversation.
Or they not have any features they could save for a pocket park or anything, is the whole thing being demolished?
The, the conversations we're having are, the, the individual that came forward initially wanted everything.
Okay.
And then in discussions with Jennifer, our thought was, well, if we're saving money on the demolition, potentially council could then say, let's use ten, fifteen thousand dollars to buy new facilities for in lawn or some other park. That, so, from, from the town's staff perspective, if we can get someone to come in and do the demolition in a timely manner, and, and the individual that we have been talking to is a contractor with the, the equipment that's able to, to make that happen, um, that should save the town quite a bit of time and, and money.
Make a clean cut of it, you know?
Yes, sir.
But that thing was built by a lot of town people, to be nice, see it go quick, not board by board.
And I do understand from Jennifer that the, the review of the, um, proposals is going very well, and if all continues to go well, staff hope to have a recommendation to council by your December meeting.
All right, uh, the tree lighting, and that would be at the Powell Plaza, December third? You know a time on that, Steve?
Actually, that's seven, seven, yes, sir.
All right, we have scheduled the Christmas dinner at the Memson, December tenth.
It's Saturday, right?
Friday, I believe, and.
Friday.
Oh, Friday, okay.
I mean, that's, of course, as everything, COVID permitting, I think they have, it's in our contract, they can cancel it. And I guess we can go the other way if things change.
What is it gonna be this year, did you know?
What was that, Ron?
The Christmas dinner?
At the Memson.
At the Memson, okay.
Sorry. Uh, and then of course, the Christmas parade will be the eleventh. Steve, are we going back to the traditional parade? We're gonna do the stationary parade again, or has that been decided?
Right now, we are planning on a traditional parade.
Okay.
Uh, uh, similar to the dinner, if new COVID, uh, come, new, new, new COVID environments come out, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust. But right now, we are planning on a traditional parade.
Okay, all right. All right, any council comments before we?
With the elections coming up.
Vote for Stephanie Lillard.
Who else is running?
That's all you're gonna do?
Not the running campaign.
You gotta get, you gotta get your signs out.
Yeah, I didn't get any, I didn't get any pencils.
I haven't seen any. You got one vote.
All right, um, anybody else? Uh, Mayor's comment, Steve, thank you so much for getting the community gathering, all that, uh, footwork, groundwork you did and getting things have, or other thing organized. I think it went, and the chief, well, thank the chief for his hot dogs, but I think it went very well.
True, Jennifer's group put, put all that stuff together.
So, thank you all for doing that, uh, I think it went very well. Maybe next time we ought to pick a topic to discuss and rather than have a just open mic.
I did talk to one person, said she thought it'd be more of give and take instead of just listening. So, I think some people want to have some of that.
Well, that, again, we didn't know how many people we were gonna get, so we couldn't really schedule. We, you know, we want to make sure everybody had a chance, but now that we've learned a little bit, next time again, I think we ought to pick a topic.
I think the outdoor venue is kind of nice to.
Yeah, yeah, it was nice, but, you know, I don't know. Well, we're just, again, we'll, that's see what COVID does. I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to wait that long maybe to do another one, but we'll just have to see how things go. We have plenty of time to decide on that. All right, anybody else? Meeting adjourned.